So.
Just.
Okay, everybody.
Welcome.
Sorry. Have you worked on it? Okay. Evening, everybody. Welcome to the planning committee meeting. Very friendly, kind of. Not online, I don't know. But that first, move on to four of these persons.
That's Council Harvey and Council Mary.
Council Harvey and Mary.
All in green.
Yep.
Yeah, all is noted. Second questions of interest, any personal or political short interest on this agenda?
Just the normal ones, chairman.
You want to thank her.
I'll play with a plan in eight pages. Yeah, just in case we ever have a meeting.
Cat's a baby.
Just in case, Karen, has to stop.
Second page.
Just in case Karen has to leave.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, in that case, just move on to item three, but they're a plan. And they're a plan. There is a report from the town plan officer, who, happy to say, followed the way through. I bring, she did a good job here in disseminating the fortune bucket account. We're only about housing requirement figures for our labour development plan, so we know what sort of houses we're going to get. Very interesting two edged reply, I hope people will read it, but the first part, he said, if we're going to be covering the period of twenty thirteen to twenty thirty three, we have no need for any more housing, because we've already met our needs. But if the emerging local plan for Buckinghamshire, which is known as OP four B, goes up to twenty twenty four, then there may be a need for further land supply. But Buckinghamshire Council this time can't tell us what that might be. So, so to twenty thirty three, twenty thirty three, no need for any more houses. Twenty forty, there may be a need coming up in the future, but hopefully we will have been told by the time we're preparing the plans.
Right.
Well, it's very encouraging response, but because even they haven't actually given that response to any Buckinghamshire council and any form of, anything to twenty twenty, I would teach it with a remarkably lot of caution. Because they're briefing Buckingham Town Council in advance of briefing Buckinghamshire Council members about a long term strategic plan. And so I think they'll hold that one gently and nurse it like a child. I don't think it will stand. If my general feeling is, they are, apart from talking about possible sites and possible what, they haven't had a consultation with us about anything significant. You will be aware that they have a subgroup consisting of everyone from their own party and have to come out of there. But if we want to talk about planning, anyone who can talk about planning in a serious way is through the growth and infrastructure select committee. Because it's the only opportunity for any public questions, for the members of the public and us, I think we will need to go there at some point. So I think if we could just know that committee down in here, and if the gender item comes up, if I don't see it, perhaps you could study that, chairman, because I think at some point you may need to make an appearance.
Thank you, Robin. Yeah, of course, she will be on top of that as well. Um, Fran.
No, I don't remember.
Okay. On the second page of the report, the item two, letters neighboring parish councils, there's a title there. It should read, these letters will be sent by the town clerk, the relevant parish clerks, not town clerks. We just made that, thank you very much. Anyone got any comments or comments on this? Right, we could thank Sheena for the work she's done.
But you're a speedy recovery.
Yeah, thank you for helping me do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Um, North Bucks, Harry's planning to sort of, Anthony, I'm living in Spain. Anything after, nothing, nothing really, I mean, all the usual issues that we rehearsed in meetings in the past will come up again, and what I'd like to do is time to take to pass out the minutes, as soon as I get them after, to get any comments and circulate them outside of meetings, so everybody gets the information as soon as possible. But, but it is going to be face to face in Winslow, so that's quite exciting. I've been going nearly two years and I've never met any of them in France, well, except for Pat, of course. Pat, I'll call someone.
We've got some pleasure in meeting Roy Van De Paul.
Well, I know. Come over all the friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosal. Well, it means that they are having a public meeting, and I hope that they do support it with some proper office and support to the big questions that we've got to address, because, um,
Slough.
Uh, and as it's in Winslow, um, hopefully they will travel that far. Um, you know, perhaps they'll have one in Buckingham one day.
Oh, that's an extra six miles, hey, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you very much, you, um, action reports, item five, receive action reports, which is put on the list. Um, just start with corrections, uh, on the front page, eight four two two five, roundabout, it's actually agenda item five point one, not six point one.
We must have to lose something from the end.
Yes, and the other one, correction, is the last comment on page three, removal of labour comments from the website, that should be agenda eight point one one, not round point one one. Um, anyone have any questions on the action list? Claire, do you have any, do I have any idea?
No, the letter.
Be done.
Um, I can't find the level money and actual contact for access or the energy, so I've gone off for the houses, it might take a while.
And we do appreciate it's been a difficult time after the death of the Majesty, catching up with everything.
There's no reason there to be.
I couldn't, I couldn't find anything apart from contact us forward through. I'm not approved.
Thank you. So everyone, have you got any question here? Sorry, Cat's a baby as well.
Um, I've contacted someone for being, um, I can't think where his position been, head locally of the NFU. If you want, um, give me, give me a bell on this street, out of this meeting, yeah. Thank you. I'm going to have posted them to the, I've found a head office, so I'll send my question.
Thank you, Robin.
Good to know, thanks. On point, though we've got the roundabout on the agenda and the map, it might be worth, and I think it took me some time to find one, what would open. But we do now have another copy of the Buckingham transport strategy, um, which I do think we need to either take that to the um, development group, or we need to discuss it here, because I think we need to mineralise ourselves with the content of that. And as it stands, as it now appears to be a live document again, because they're referring to it in development. So after it being not referred to as our plan and other matters like, um, the Western bypass, it's now been referred to, I think it's something we need to look at and get an understanding of it, see how we can, um, use it to our advantage. Um, because I think if it is a large document, we can pick the policies out of it that suit us. Thank you, Robin.
Which you just need really to fire, one, which is the draft plan for the proposed, um, left hand center lane on the eight four two two traffic road coming in from Melbourne, Queens. Um, we've all had it started later, thank you, Catherine, from agent, get hold of this, I do, Robin, with you.
Robin, you know.
Yeah, you might have, get hold of this.
I was saying, doing the screen grab off the screen in the meeting.
The concern to the, the concern to the totally unnecessary, because there's never been any traffic problems for left turning traffic at that roundabout. Um, I've lived by it for ten years and I've never had a seen more than three cars waiting to go around, if, if any. Um, it's going to be a massive bit expensive operation, because there's a steam bank down the side of it. And, um, I, I feel this plan, I think that we should actually point this out to Bucks, Buckinghamshire High, this is it's unnecessary, it's unneeded, and it would be a huge waste of money.
Absolutely.
Martin.
Yeah, not only the, not really needed, and it's engineering, um, sort of, uh, needs extra engineering to do it. Um, there's also the, uh, footpath, you know, people getting across, um, from the central reservation to that place. Because there's another lane, filter lane to, to run past all the cars, that's another issue, and it's the only way to get there.
Right. Absolutely right.
I think we can include that. Um, Robin.
Is there a, a paper called a reason why they wanted it? It's a.
It's written in section one oh six, under section one oh six.
Because it.
It's all those things that they haven't ticked off their to-do list yet, so it keeps getting put back in.
Because I'm not, it's a public footpath behind the barrier.
It's probably, I think.
It's far too wide, isn't it?
So. It might be also worth asking, where are you going to divert that to? So I can't just close it, and it's going to reverse the movement, reversal all along. Yeah, there's the second one oh six, the mitigation is to do with those away, not, it's, couldn't get much.
Robin.
This policy, um, had its roots back in the Buckingham transport development plan, which was originally, its intentions were to make, take contributions out of the developments to, other developments to mitigate for the traffic. Now, this dates back to the early twenty thirteen, fourteen, because it was in an original plan when it went out. Also in that plan, it said it'd take mitigations to the western bypass, which would have been probably better that amount of money sent on the western bypass.
Yeah.
My only concerns of it is, is in the sense that they probably built it. Um, but having, when they constructed, if you remember, the Tesco's roundabout, and they had to do the increased lane on the Tesco roundabout, right next door to the town council's railway walk, they had to build a revetment, which is a large expense to build this arrangement, because you can't sort of, a road has to be stabilised. So you will have to have a massive revetment for the bank and the slope going away from it. And, um, and that will cost quite a lot, um, period, but it is going to come out of the development. I mean, so, um, for where it is, but I think it would be probably, as probably said, because we asked the methodology that leads since the conclusion that this is going to support the maize more development, because it isn't going to make any difference unless they're suggesting they're all going to come out down the lane, past the church. So I think we need to understand why. Um, but it has, it's something that they can pin on them, because it's been in policy, of policy, of policy. And we don't, because you're not talk, they don't, haven't spoke to town council in any great length about their intentions to do with the eight four two one. And we need to get an understanding, to put the picture together, what their thinking is to do with transport. Seeing one thing in isolation isn't really helping, and I, I am seriously concerned that if you look at the bank in there, that will cost absolutely mint to put that up, because I worked with Graham Smith on getting the, they originally wanted to just put the road in, but we, he forced it, we was an officer at the time, kept you putting a concrete wall revetment by the footpath, because it just would tumble into the brook. So, um, the honest thing within there, the, I think they never even noticed, but I think to understand their methodology on it. And they know it anyway.
And probably whether the member remembers as well, that the middle name, it's actually got its own calming, uh, measures that can be put in place on, under the traffic plan, and the section one oh six for the warm up pre-development. So it's all, everything's completely voluntary.
Wouldn't it worth asking if they've got any survey material to prove that there's a necessity?
Definitely.
Is that the old test, do you think, Robin?
Um, with the old test, it's a consultant for the council, so you probably better write to Chris Pines and then to Anna Carey. How are you? Yeah, as me, I pronounce the name wrong all the world, she doesn't mind. Um, um, but she's, she's, I've been writing to her and she'll delegate it, because he, he works, I believe, though he works at Buckinghamshire Council, he works on the transport, which is, and he wrote, he wrote the plan anyway.
Well, that's fine, I was going to do it.
Martin. Just to pick it up on what, uh, Robin said, you know, it'll probably be built anyway. I mean, that's my fear, because surely if it's in one oh six, they've got to spend the money, because if they don't spend it, they're not going to get it back in another way. So, oh, let's not let the developer not, you know, give us that money, and therefore, let's go ahead and build it, even if we want it or not. Do I have the perfect caption on that?
I think section one oh six actually says a contribution to Buckingham transport strategy for the purpose of, so it's probably not that difficult.
Okay, so.
The strategy.
Thank you.
Roger, did you want? No, no, sorry. Yes. Just bring your hands.
I think you need to understand the methodology, and as I said, because otherwise, and, and we're not going to change anything. It's been agreed at a planning meeting, which very little was said, um, consequently, but, um, all good. Um, so I couldn't think of the, because otherwise, because as I said earlier, you're only hearing part of the story. You can't go to pitch and of what their long term plans are.
Thank you. Well, it's a very happy champion, and to move on, asking those questions, thank you very much. Could we move on to item six, some planning applications, um, not too many tonight. First one is White House property, this is some two cottages at the entrance to Whitehouse Farm. This will be eight four two one, it's a grade two listed building. Um, it's an application for the post front porch and attached garage, hard port, formation of fence and crossover. Heritage are happy with the plans, as far as existing is concerned. Um, and apart from the making a hole in the hedge to join the service road, that doesn't come directly on the road. Or people wanted to probably notice, it comes on first, maybe through.
Exactly, the old one.
Yeah.
Because they re, re, repeated it when we had the bypass roundabout.
Yeah, when it used to come apart.
They took some bents out on.
Yeah.
Just out of interest, the farm is actually on the market this week at three point five million pounds. But these, the two cottages are standalone properties, private property, it's not part of the plant.
Oh.
Does everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
Would, Martin? Would we allow them to, I don't mind coming through the hedge, because there's another hedge, isn't there, in front of that, that, that separates the main road from the old, from the service road?
It doesn't run that far. Um, you will be able to momentarily glimpse through the hedge, the house. So if you want to say, it's going to affect the setting of the listing.
I've got no concerns on the aesthetics, I was more worried about, um, the procedural side and the legality of coming through a hedge at a different place. Just like, you know, you've got to have a drop curve if you want to do things.
That's the hedge you're talking about. It's on the inside of the town road.
It's the right of the business.
Yes, but that's, uh, is that their hedge, or is it?
Well.
Good point.
Highway, at least one, I get it. I don't, I don't have a problem with them coming through.
This is close for events outside, it says there, we built this close for events behind it.
Well, are you even sure about that? Okay.
We're happy.
Yeah, it was just that.
Right, so in accordance with our regime, I would propose that, um, we have no objection, seconded by Anthony, thank you very much, all those in favour? Thank you, that's, um, everyone except Robin who stays. Thank you. Um, next one is, we're moving up to Avenue Road of Norton Road, this is Chicana, which became, it's the second house coming into the avenue, the first one on the corner is a bungalow. We've got this bungalow and then four, um, two store, two storey houses, as you can see, it's, um, not in terribly good condition, this house, um, the household, this thing really got planning permission for an extension last December, um, as, as ground floor extensions, now to raise the roof for the third floor extension, create a living accommodation, two storey front side and rear extensions, it would increase it from three to four bedrooms, that was plenty of power, I think you could see from Catherine's photographs. Um, the, the only comment from Buckinghamshire Council is from the ecologist, he wants a back box and a south facing side and a small bird box on the north facing side of the building.
Yeah.
I think Buckinghamshire started by, the loss of the bungalow car, I think suggested that.
Um, she did, but I think as a, as a whole, we support this, on the proviso that it doesn't detrimentally impact on the human faces of the adjoining neighbours. I think aesthetically, the bungalows, not the best, and, um, the design of it, that was, would be an improvement.
Yeah.
So we, we have no objections to it, although Caroline, Caroline, um, does like a bungalow, yes.
Thank you. Martin?
Yes, uh, again, aesthetically, it's, you know, it is what it is. Um, I will oppose it, because it is a loss of that type of housing stock, and I don't think we should go down that avenue. Sorry. Sorry.
Avenue.
Is that the term, I think? Uh, yes, okay, I propose the Buckingham Town Council opposes, because it is losing a bungalow out of the housing stock.
Thank you. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Fran Lewis, thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments?
No, I think not, right.
In that case, we'll put it to the other, all those in favour of the motion, that we oppose it? Uh, we can't mean.
Yeah.
So, are those against the motion? One, extensions, two, so we oppose it on those grounds, thank you. Um, the next one is number line, Brackley Road. Both Victorian houses, one or Jordan, uh, sorry, Edwardian, almost opposite the cemetery, the particular one, right opposite the entrance of the farm next to the cemetery, Palm Track. Um, it's an extension back behind the building, um, it's no longer the existing building, so the flood risk is minimalised, the floodwater, it starts people to do. And what, the one thing that might run is that it is a flat roof, the extension, um, and it's covered in a rubberised PVC material. Can't be seen from almost anywhere, apart from the bowls club, which is a little bit of a area. The back of that. Anyone, anyone got any views on this?
Martin, well, I think the whole point is that no one will have a view on it. Um, and these days with the, uh, the vulcanised and rubberised, uh, flat roof, you know, they are there for millennium almost. So it's a lot better than, than the old type of flat roofs that, uh, that we used to see. So, um, in short, I don't have any objections to this.
Martin?
Yeah, thank you, just that, I, I think most of the houses have similar extensions. This isn't an exception along there, and, um, you know, so I, I, I don't see why we, I would support the application.
Yeah, Roger, this. I can't really support it. You support it. Anyone else? In that case, I propose that we have no objections, seconded by, that's a rug, all those in favour? Everyone except Robin who's staying, thank you very much. And the next one is East and West Buckingham lodges, at the entrance to Stowe Avenue. Complete, due to the salt, pepper box, which dropped on the estate. Um, no comment from Heritage yet, I've checked about four o'clock, uh, but it's all being done without spoiling any, um, of the look of the place, it's just raising a roof slightly, it can still be behind the bowels tray, so it won't be seen from anywhere. A grade two listed. Um, anyone have a view on that, Fran?
I can't see any reason to object to this, sorry, because it's, it's in order to, um, try and, um, allow historic buildings to be more habitable, um, for the present climate.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? In that case, subject to the heritage officers' comments, I propose that, um, you don't object, no group, good group. Seconded by Councilor Ralph. Um, the way we do it in these meetings now is Councilor Ralph, I, I propose Councilor Ralph seconded.
So, yeah, don't jump in, it's.
Martin, if that's ready or not, when I say, all those in favour? Again, they're going to favor the part from justice that finished, standing, thank you. Right, the next three are all, um, CPLs, that stood for Law and, uh, Law, Law, that's not. Um, first one's certainly determined, Robin, it's way up on this hill, it's proposed a lockup on window insertion, three new windows to rear elevation. Um, this has already been approved, because members decided no objection. Um, the second one is.
I just want to see photographs later on, they're drawings.
Yeah.
So the next one is twenty four, down and close, which is down on the village, just about thirty feet. Um, it's proposed single storey brick extension that is going to replace a conservatory. Um, the one thing we have a concern about is that the gap between this new extension and the back wall of the adjoining house is fifteen centimetres. That's about the width of my laptop.
Yeah.
And, and we do have concerns about that, we may have a discussion this afternoon.
That is small. Is there anything from the neighbour?
Ah, they're not, they don't get a site notice from them. This worries me, because they're getting a lot of means now, and they're not consulted locally, so it could be a mad surprise when the builder turns up in stuff, so the neighbourhood, oh, complain about that, it would know.
I've got feeling that might be one of the guys who survived builders.
I don't want.
Right builders.
Oh.
Martin?
Is it that close, because the existing conservatory is that close, and therefore, they are assuming it's life of a life? Because otherwise, don't we talk about a metre or something away from a adjoining wall?
From the plan, as a concern.
The existing, from, from our plan, you can see that conservatory, which is the aggregate one, is not the same distance as they proposed in the extension.
Actually, um, the existing conservatory is effectively a lean to, isn't it? So therefore, um, as I've mentioned before, um, I wonder about the wall, is, is that, that is with the neighbours, is subject to, you know, um, actual, yeah, that's right. Um, but on, on that basis, if you're, if you're wanting to put in how it's drawn with the proposal, um, then surely the designer could have really just, um, made a very neat little extension to that wall and, and continued with the party wall approach. And if I was the chap or lady next door, um, then I would argue that as, um, I should have a party wall agreement, that a little slitty bit there, where all the leaves and the wet and everything could get in, would, could actually damage effectively my side of the party wall, because it's always, you know, the party wall's on, on the opposite, as it were. And, and I would have thought, surely the designer could have made a better job of that, really.
So have we got grounds, Catherine, to defer a decision until, uh, is, so we have more information on whether the neighbour's been consulted, or the possibility of getting a party wall?
No, I've got no indication at all, there's any, any consolation I'd take from them.
Yeah. In fact, they don't have a site notices either, so.
No, 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 certainly, I've never seen anything. Different coloured ones, you know.
That, Anthony, following that, I propose that we do what we suggest, and defer it to which of.
I, I, I would major yours, and I'll second whether the neighbour or not would be agreeable to a party wall, so that's, you second that?
Yeah, Fran?
I was just going to say, in Catherine's, um, spiel on it, it does say that, um, the present conservatory is up against the rear wall, number twenty eight.
That's it, yeah. Lisa? Lisa.
Okay, but how are we going to find out about the neighbour, are we going to contact a neighbour ourselves, because if they have site lectures? But there's going to be no site lectures, so how do we know they own?
Exactly, so.
That's what we're saying, that's what we're. That's what we're asking for the permit until the neighbour is consulted.
But how will we know?
They can stop the neighbours, clearly they've got the press.
Yeah, what I'm saying is that we still won't know if the neighbour's been told, because it's.
The point of sending notifications, they're supposed to send us notes. And if we say, can we say that the neighbours have been consumed and.
Okay.
And and are not bothered.
All right, so we actually. Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, they're laying themselves open to all sorts of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Solicitors' letters and things.
I think the difficulty with these notifications is that, oh, this is a replacement type of application. Uh, for a letter which used to say, do I need planning permission for this? So it's not actually a planning application, so the local authority don't have to put a letter up. And you have to notify everybody, because if you if you're saying, I need planning permission for this.
It's put through on the standard application form.
Sorry?
It does come through on the standard application.
That's right, yeah, but we used to do this by letter, but then they, that, the government changed the rule years ago, that you got to hand. Submit this official request and pay a fee. So, but basically all you're asking is, is it normal for the meeting to build this without planning permission?
So the building regulations not grant this?
I don't know, they'll they'll need to submit a building notice or a building regs application, but again. They're not like a planning application, so you, not none of us here would know if the building regs application has been put in because they're. They're not um accessible to the public. It's a, it's a, it's a bit of a. The way they operate this game, this situation, well, this is just. People put these things in and everybody, like parishous and town councils get to consult, but. There's there's no point, because you can't, they they can only reply to the applicant. Yes, your permission, although you don't. So it's it's just a legal nicety.
Yeah.
Rather than a letter saying.
On the other hand, I do have evidence that they take notice for themselves.
They probably do, but they, you know, they can.
Then they end up fixing it and then it goes to your dealers, you will see that in their picture.
This is why we're consultants, we have local knowledge.
But it's, it is a, it's not a very good system, thank you, Roger, as well, I appreciate it, Martin?
Uh, carrying on that thing, um, I think there could be insurance issues with next door. Um, and the fact that it was a, I don't know what you call it, a stub wall, a a low wall. Um, on the existing conservatory, and now we're going for a much higher one. Um, as has been said, that will create more of a dampish area around there. Um, and I don't think that is a good situation. For either uh tenants, owners, whatever they are of uh the said house and the one that it um is closed to. Now or in the future.
Thank you, so we've got the proposal that we defer the decision until we've got more information about the possibility of a party wall.
Yeah.
Um, all those in favour? That's everyone except Robin Stamen, thank you very much, Catherine will obviously know how to work that. In the final building application, um. Such as what laws, twenty two Mollborough Court, which is up on page two, it's adding a fifth bedroom as a ground floor extension. Yeah, single story brick extension, um, it already has three marking spaces to include the garden. Um, anyone, any views on that? No, in that case I propose that we approve it, thank you, Anthony seconded, all those in favour? Okay, everyone, I think Robin, yes, there's two tree applications, one of which has already been dealt with, it's some. It's Paul Bree Tree with fifty five Wells Street, where we will put access to a highway from the rear garden. This is one that we drew attention to the fact that it uh. Have not, we weren't clear that the applicant had the right to go onto the land, it's it's still a planning application outstanding. And the condition that the tree office have put on it was consented before, from the tree owner prior to the implementation of works. So he listened to us and let's see, they come back on board, but that's already been approved.
I don't know how much interest you're going to get on to that.
Yeah. And the other one, which was. Sorry, Martin.
Um, surely, well, it is also, it is the approval of the owner of the tree, but also. Even if the tree gets um, or the owner of the tree approves, surely it's still a situation of. Moving out of his or their area, uh ownership across onto the highway. It's just not the tree, is it, the tree, doesn't matter if the tree's there or not.
But he wants access from his rear garden into Brooks Court and then Wells Street.
Yeah, well, even worse.
But that's in his planning application, there is a gate on that side in his planning application, but that hasn't been decided yet. So that house on Wells Street is listed to those that's interested.
So we could find that he removes the tree and then can't get planning.
Yeah. Well.
Well, yes.
That's what this guy did.
But that's why we're here, because.
Yeah, we could make that point already, so, thank you. Uh, and the other big application, number ten, thirty one Wagon's garden, um. There was some objections, no objections to one and two, but there were objections to pollarding the U tree. Twenty seven foot above ground level, but there's some.
It's got a very fine twisted trunk, I mean, it's really interesting to look at.
Yeah, so we have made those by email, aren't we, those?
Yes.
That that's in hand, haven't actually been approved as far as I know, yeah?
Well, the the second one hasn't, but they are protected trees, whereas the other one is a conservation area.
So we've made we've made our plans on that one.
We just say, we told you so.
But see, I'm going to say.
We told you so.
Thank you, um, moving on then, um, item six two, planning inspector, we've got two planning appeals. Um, which is coming up, one against. Extending the vehicle access across the public footpath at thirty three Willow Drive. You recall the um applicant claimed that he had, he owned the property, but he wants to extend its driveway, but he doesn't. Um, it was refused by Buckinghamshire Council, but he's not taking that line down, um, despite that, they said it fell as a court with G P D O. Would need planning permission, it's subject to appeal against the refusal. Of the application. I think a big worry here is that. What we've said already, it is good as a planning, for a planning field, but I feel we should add to that, that if it's not allowed. It will create a precedent to gain the land grabbing, you know, what they want in that. At places, so I would, I thought one would be firmly, firmly asked that we add that to our reasons.
Yeah.
Against it. Anyone else have a view on that?
Well, I was gonna say, presumably if he doesn't own the land, he can't build anything. So it's just a.
You want to take that in block, block paving across the pavement?
Yeah.
And then we've got a number of things, there is a raised curb. Um, with a drain right in front of it, so you couldn't make a block curb out of that.
No, but it just, it just seems that if the if the hardware authority won't let me do it because they own it. Then it just seems a bit of a waste of time in appealing. Because you're appealing and it's there, but you can't.
Somebody said that to him. I mean, this is, this is a guy who didn't produce the standard plan you can get from the, the, the really one. He didn't even do one of those, he used a open reach asset map.
She's loving it.
Yeah, he says the location of works is a dead end with no through traffic and only accessible by the handful of residents. That to me is completely irrelevant, and, you know, it doesn't matter where it is, he doesn't own it. He's trying to take something that's not his and it should be available to the. Any pedestrians who want to walk along there, it's not a private road. It's irrelevant that it's a dead end and nobody else wants to walk along there, maybe I'll go and walk along.
Yeah.
Take a two wide button.
Why not?
So this has been about the written representation, so if we just play on that over the line, if we just again confirm our reasons, adding. Our concern about creating a precedent. Absolutely, thank you.
Sorry.
Take a vote on that, okay.
Sorry, chum quickly, sorry, um, we're we're also supposed to clarify the clear of any services, if there's a drain. That's a service, surely.
Yeah. This is, this is the point we made, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, seconded, Anthony, thank you very much, all those in favour? Thank you, everybody, so Robin again, and the other plan we do is um cost structure in Nelson Street. They didn't give permission to keep the uh the lower advertising board in.
They didn't confirm for the replacement of the existing ones.
It's all done and done in one go, yeah, and I'll make a comment about the lower ones. Lisa.
Thank you, um, the last sentence, um, so page four forty nine. The repellent is amenable to remove, removal of the hoarding below the windows. Um, why doesn't he just do it then, if he's amenable to it, just just remove the hoarding, that's that's the one that we're objecting to.
It's actually painted onto the structure and it's going to be quite.
That's not our problem.
A listed building.
He said here that he's amenable to doing it, so if you are, then do it.
And the inspector says you don't need to, then he doesn't have to spend.
But then he's not amenable to doing it, is he? Why put it in there?
Doing if you're made to do it, but.
That doesn't, no, I'm sorry, it's, if if you're happy to do something. And you know that the town council's objecting because it's the conservation area, then in good faith. You've got to have to do it.
The replacement facial and projecting sign rejected as well, so he needs that refusal of returning.
And that's, that's.
And then he can remove the other ones, but as it stands, he's going to have to remove his facial board and his projecting sign as well.
Yeah.
Uh, replacements of the the existing ones from the, what were they called before?
Londers. And I get that, and that's fine, but his sentence saying that he, it was happy to do it. That's my argument, is if you're happy to do it and you know that we are objecting to that specifically, then in good faith, why not do it?
Well, our objections are there in writing.
Yeah.
That we made, so is anyone wanted to add anything to that, or we're happy to let that go forward as our written representation?
Yeah.
I'll propose that then. Actually, seconded, thank you very much, all those in favour? Everyone in support, thank you. Yeah, that is a planning application, planning decisions, you'll see on the action seven, um, we propose ninth and long bridge. Lady, but we've lost that one. Um, the planning office decided there was sufficient space there, some self containment for that, it's been called all the services and. The dental practice at fifty to fifty one Nelson Street, which we're proposing, a big draw, so for the time being. Again, that's a listed building.
They wanted to change part of it to later on.
Right, that's.
Including the dentist.
Okay.
And the dentist.
Fine, um. Other, right, moving on then to item eight, Buckinghamshire Council, that you seem to use the Buckinghamshire Council, new documents have been issued from Buckinghamshire. That's going to make a difference, Robin, and everybody.
I have several things to mention, um, firstly, I'd, I'd maybe want to look at appendix B. Uh, which was our, your concerns about G P R responses and how they took it down off the website. Um, and I put that question in to try and get some clarity. I don't think I've managed that, I've managed to get a written response, which doesn't really offer much more clarity apart from legacy. Artists and whatever, so I'm not too sure where we go with that, but it doesn't actually get us any further for why these documents disappear. Uh, and what is the. I mean, I'd be interested in people's comments on that latterly, whether we think that explanation is good, that's what we need to know. This doesn't sort of suggest why they disappear when you're trying to look back at appeals.
Hmm.
Um, right, I'll, I'll stop if you want me to then let you talk about that.
Okay, yeah, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you all.
So, um, on that, um, so let me get, it might say page thirty one of forty nine, and it's the last um sentence. Um, so the first thing is where it says, uh, four or five lines up that the single Buckinghamshire Council white system has been approved. When will that start then, because saying that it's been approved is brilliant, but again, just word salad. If we've asked specifically about that, you know, let us know a date at least. Um, and then if members are aware, that little bit there, um, that we have reported instances plenty of times. Um, of uh feedback and comments that were removed. Um, do we know if they were given over to the um appeal at the time? Um, to the adjudicator, were they given over or not? Because again, it doesn't say, it just says, let them know if we know of an instance, well, we have previously. But it doesn't really give us any information again.
Hmm. Well, this is the problem with the polit, it's it's a political answer to a business type question. I guess, I mean, I'm happy to discuss how we go back and get some more clarity around the points which are missing. I think I can do that in um correspondence first, and then if we get no joy, we'll probably go for a question. Um, because the constitution is so grand, I have to be very careful when I place questions, now I use my time efficiently, but I think. Members want to discuss what they think's lacking, the chairman and everyone, and then come back, I'll go back and seek some clarity around the points which are missing.
Thank you.
Because, I mean, I could do that.
I appreciate that.
Problem? I was just gonna, I, I haven't read that very well, but just a quick question. If this you have, in the vein of a refusal, so to an appeal, you've got six months.
Yeah.
So could, could we not ask them to leave them on for six months?
That's what we did until they appear in cases.
But they answered that.
And they say, no, it goes straight away.
Which seems to me that's dark, because if you.
Like you were just saying, if you wish to refer to your comments or other people's comments, because on some applications there's thousands.
Yeah.
And so that to me puts those writing comments um not supporting an appeal, they're at a disadvantage.
Yes.
Yeah, just to be clear, um, for clarity, they, we replied from Peter's bracket, so. A small number of applications will end up appealed, so the guidance stated at this point is the representations should be republished. But they don't disappear completely, they keep them somewhere safe and then put them back on the website. Who's that being tested? It doesn't, that, we don't know. Yeah. What may I, just expand on what you're saying, um, it's not the only thing, of course, appeals, you've got judicial reviews.
Yeah.
You've got new or amended plans after what's been approved or refused, generally amended plans, so.
I I was not, I was going to go that way, I thought that I'd give everyone the respect here in the view of everyone before I.
Do you want to start round then, or do you like?
I was, I was just gonna say, on that, it's if, um, if there's a history of a, um, property as well, isn't it? And in previous times, um, if you looked at a property on every DC's planning portal. Um, you could see all the comments and um, um, documents associated with that, um. Um, that property for every single planning application that has ever been on there. Um, so I think, I think we're, we're losing um a huge amount of um. Information which is really valuable for making future decisions, um.
Yeah, I can, can I, definitely, you and Chan, what, what I would suggest, if we write into, um, Catherine, um. What your concerns are, and I'll come in and sit down and then work through them, make sure that I do a collegiate response to take everybody's. All, I've got my own concern, but I wanted to take, to commit this to them.
Be helpful.
Yeah.
The other counter on the other side, you'll see, you know that we were quite. Burned about, um, Serge, and they, and they're very. learned about um sewage and it and they're very unclear. Again, they're very unclear about who's going to do what and whether they're going to see it. Um. They seem to pass it over to the Environment Agency, although they agree in a motion that they would evade right strong word. But the danger is with sewage uh regulations as they are, and you you can support a cover system probably pumped to twenty thirty five. Um, none of the legislation which is current is going to come into place until twenty fifty, which means the sewage companies can basically wait till it rains and 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 they can act allegedly, lawfully or whatever, which didn't help us because we know as a community, there's at least um two cases which will be going through the courts to do with Buckingham, which at the time is appropriate. I'll give you the details. Um, but not now. Um, so I think that um this is worrying. It's it appears that there is no rigor um on our rivers and and we we were all out there doing our little bit, which is in the river. It was clean that day, that this pumping surge in the river seems to be quite a problem across Buckinghamshire and it it seems that they um they are doing something called, they're doing a policy uh um a review on the chalk streams in the Environment and Select Committee, which is has written a report saying they're going to go and look at the chalk stream and pollution and how they manage it. They hadn't taken in considerable views. It suggests they're looking at, but they haven't taken into consideration all the temps, which I've got to look at. See how I can get that back to the table because it seems really silly to do a report on one area without taking the others. But that's the response we got. Further to that, I went back recently, as I said, I think I said at council, and questioning about the archaeology site, which we've all been really interested in, of the ancient bodies, and the response on the website is on the on the webcast. If I was to say that I was over under impressed with the response, um it probably wouldn't go far enough. Um, but it appears that very little has been able to happen since we raised it, and this goes back to twenty nineteen, and it originally got into the papers in twenty twenty, and every paper under the sun wrote their own version of the truth. Um, but um so we're not likely to get an instant thing. There are, um, perhaps I can correct if I'm wrong, there is the Institute of Architects of of archaeology, which is the monitoring body which oversees the works of archaeological firms. Um, I did intromate in my verbal question, perhaps they were going to go that way, but they didn't come back verbally saying that, only that they were working very hard and they needed to look at this and there was a seventy eight, it's on them in the public, so they said in the public, it's a seventy eight thousand pound bill to pay for the preparation and preserve of the what they call it, post archaeological remains. That means the actual conservation of them. And at the moment, there's no money with the private um archaeology firm who haven't been paid, although they were quite pleased that they managed to get the people talking to each other again, which I think um over twelve months, I think even I could have had two people talking to each other in twelve months. In fact, I could have talked to them lots of times in twelve months. They'd wanted me to endlessly. Um, but no, that's one, two other things. And then there's two things that I think you need, perhaps we need to start taking aware of. Um, I went to a meeting this morning, this afternoon, to do with um H S two, and you may say, why am I raising it? There's lots of litigation works going on balancing ponds and stuff to do with H S two, which contribute to the water source, and they're going to flow into the um Ray's Brook um Chetwood. They end up into Ray's Brook, so the H S two is putting balancing ponds there. I've asked to make sure that the flows out from those balancing ponds and from H S two railway doesn't increase the flow, which gets into the water source, because at times of flood and heavy rain, what we could get a situation, which I suggested today, was the water could go into off the railway into this balancing pond, straight down the river through Stephen Clayton, and then straight down from Stephen Clayton through Forber, um and then straight through Forber into the um the um then is it flooding the weir down Fortum, Bucklewea, then you back back up into Buckingham and Buckingham could be affected by that flow of water and flooding, and it could increase the total amount of flow. I think it's something that we do need to be minded to have a look at these works when they are adjacent to the water source. Um, so I raised that thinking that um, of course, twenty twenty wasn't the great year for us, or was it? Like so, and it's two years on and that, hopefully we won't see it again, but I'm sure we'll get challenged. The other element was, there's a couple of things I I haven't commented on, one because I'm on the fire authority, and that is the um there's an application for another um or will be an application for another um beacon on the tower, you know telecommunications, which is coming forth. So I wrote that and I wouldn't comment on it because I'm on the fire authority. Um, but also something which I spoke to the chairman about, you need to know that there's an application from um, or an application interest being expressed by Tyrrells, if you come to me, I'm not going to comment on the application per se, only to say that there are some known policies in the local plan and the Vale Plan, which we perhaps yourselves should look to talk about, because this is another three hundred houses um being looked to be built the opposite side of the uh white hat um side, which I believe took the chair, that's an was an industrial area site within our local plan. I think it was from memory, be something the other U two twenty twenty, something like that. But I do think that it's something that you need to be minded to, and I don't know how you deal with it as a town council. Of course, I had always the opportunity that it might not go to Strategic Development Trial and might end up coming to another committee, so I won't say anything to get out of it, just in case the remotely possibility I get to sit on a planning application about my own community, you know, they're just just, you know, it'd be quite nice to once in two and a half, three years to sort of have a plan application, you know, I could sit on, you know, after not declaring any prejudice limits on so many applications, it'd be nice if one of them come up once, I mean. But at the moment, they seem to be being decided by the chairs and the planning officers and and whatever. So I I just make notes on that.
I hope that helps.
That's helpful. I think Frank has a question.
Um, that's not really a question. Um, thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Robin. Um, I um would like to challenge really um in appendix B, um the response from Buckinghamshire Council and Gareth Williams, which states, um um Buckinghamshire Council is of course appalled at the discharge of sewage into our waterways, and they have experienced directly in Buckinghamshire that has been going on um at Chesham Sewer Works, discharges by Thames Water on a very regular basis for as long as I can remember.
I think he was referring to coastal waters there. Not because we don't have a coastline.
Yeah.
It's not clear.
No, I'm seeing.
Not experienced directly in Buckinghamshire.
Yeah.
Coastal water.
Um. Yeah, Tom, yes.
This is a good design.
Yeah.
I think they are where the problems mentioned, yeah. While on that theme, Robin, if I could just pick up on that, um you will be aware, last week, I mentioned it really good council, but the environment agency have been using Covid as an excuse not to do these things.
Yeah.
Point made official that ended in April twenty twenty one, the all restrictions. Um, and at the same time, the Rivers Trust threw attention to the fact that the Environment Agency was using the Covid excuse not to tackle, deal with sewage going into rivers. Um, of course, the other thing, God, outstanding, what we've just touched on, it's six years now since we had that alleged chemical discharge at Brackley, and we've still not had the results for prosecution twenty eighteen. That's right, that fits it. Four years, twenty eighteen.
Um, what I what I can say on that is there is a case before that. So the case before that has to get before the court, as it's it's a phenomenon. The findings of that case will predict how other matters come out with them, and that should be before the courts um in next year, at some point early next year. So.
That'll be the test, though.
Yeah, I think my understanding is, under the light of or to myself, is that um that that will be quite a major case. Um, it went from a two day case to a three day case, and that's a five day case. So I am monitoring it and I'm not giving any insight of where it is. It's the last thing I want after um two, three years, four years, five years sitting with it, is somebody else to rock up in twenty seconds and just stand there in a photograph and say they solved it again. So um um so I'm definitely giving that information out about it, and it's people I would work with. Um.
Thank you, Robin. Um, what we'd also like to raise in the subject of three hundred houses up next to Whitehead, the town clerk is aware of this. Um, we are going to invite to the potential developer, um because they have asked to meet councillors individually, which is not our policy, but they will be invited for a meeting of the council.
I'm going to go not the next instrument because that's quite a busy one, one after that for council.
Um, so these, we will make a point to um the developers, Granada Developments, that Site Q is in the Buckingham neighborhood plan and was reinforced in the new vault at Site B, we see O twenty. So it's it's got a double protection, not only from our neighborhood plan, but also about Roger.
It's also got protection from the letter you received from the planners. They're going to go.
Thank you.
It is nought, and it's nought, isn't it?
Yeah, I I haven't took a correspondent today on it, but um only to ask some questions. So I'm not expecting an answer till after the twenty third, looking at the re receiv- Um, so I might get an answer the week after that. If it's useful, I'll bring it back. If it's not, I'll keep it to myself, but um but I am doing due diligence. I'm just not minded to get into this discussion with the developer for obvious reasons.
Thank you for mentioning, Robin. So that that is in that the town clerk will be inviting to the local, inviting them if they still can't do anything.
Just lastly, I I am going to be talking about enforcement later in the week. So if you've got any wrong views on enforcement that I haven't got myself, um um I'm always willing to hear good things to say. I'm expecting meetings in the now important.
Any other questions for Robin? No, Robin, thank you. You were comprehensive before.
Well, almost, yeah. Um, just seemed like we've been quite busy the past.
Yes.
Three or four months.
Much helpful. Thank you very much. Um, so yeah, we've done both the item eight, um Catherine, in appendix C, has updated this, the undecided opposing call in the term to call in applications to pack for information. Um, I think mine updated in represent your outside bodies. Anybody here? No, thank you.
They're all still in boxes, Chairman, down in the archaeology, the outside body, because.
Like in terms of Buckinghamshire Council committee meetings, North Bucks area planning committee in September and October were both cancelled, which is why Robin is getting so crossfoced, and ten to um Strategic Sites Committee in September, one was cancelled.
The October one was also cancelled.
Yeah, thank you for that. Is it democracy at work?
Yep.
Could I, through you, Chairman, say that can we have on um start monitoring, but do you think that proved our lack of consultation at the town council level? And I do think we need to start monitoring two select committees' agendas, one being the growth and infrastructure select committee. This is your only chance to, if something comes up to do with local development plans, and you wish to have it, you're perfectly entitled to go and ask a question. Chairman, I appeared the other day, they breached the constitution, but they were reminded about that afterwards. Um, but we we do need to, you know, it needs people going to these committees, right? The other one is the Environment and Transport Select Committee, because I do think we need to monitor those genders. Because if something come up in the Environment Transport Committee in relation to roadworks or major development, roadworks in Buckingham, I think that we need as a committee, the right committee to go and speak about that. And the trouble with the constitution of Buckinghamshire Council, it was wrote in such a way that it's um that you've got to, you've got to, as a member of the public, pick an item which is on the agenda. So the ball is stacked against us at town level to actually be able to hold them to account about your issues. And when it goes past that, um unless we call it in, we're calling something in this week. It's always good fun, of course, I mean, um, and we're calling something in this week, but that's not in local, but I do think we need to start monitoring this stuff. As the development Buckinghamshire plan starts to um evolve, this will be going, because it has to go to the growth and infrastructure committee, that's the committee they chose to put it through scrutiny. And any member of the public, any member of the council has got the right to go and ask a question. And if we're not going to talk to a, appears they're not going to talk to us as a town council very readily to twenty twenty three, um it's a standing issue quarterly, whatever on there. And I I do think that we've got to start using those things, because I can go and speak endlessly, but I'm not the town council and and I think that you need to start having your own, your own voice in these things as well. I might rock up, but um but but that's um I'm not the town council, I shouldn't be speaking for them on on, you know, I do think it's something to monitor.
Thank you, Ron. My bottom.
Yeah, under these uh items, pen on our agenda, but they say why they're cancelled. Is it because they don't have any items put on their agenda? Or are they deferring the work to a, we've already come as responsible.
Delegated.
Delegated um officer?
Officer and chairman of the recruitment committee.
So now we have a way that only one person is looking at particular items on their agenda. Well, okay, elected or. Ooh.
One elected member of office.
And they together make the decision of that committee, which has been cancelled.
Yeah.
They make a decision about whether it goes to committee. If they decide it doesn't go to committee, it goes to the case officer to make a case for what her recommendation, is her recommendation decision. And then it's just basically, if the importance goes to the team leader, then it's signed off.
But surely there are other items on their agenda that are not.
Well, you'd think that minutes as a last meeting would occur and things like that.
It's obviously they're not having any minutes at all, I mean, because that would have been cancelled, so there won't be any of those.
I did actually have a look today at the six months since May, because that's the municipal year, we've had six months. There's seven meetings for each of those two committees. Four of them have been cancelled to North Bucks and three of them have been cancelled for strategic.
Wow.
But if we don't.
Strategic is county wide, so I mean, it can be a work.
That's what I'm thinking. I mean, there must be some work to be done on this.
Most of them, when they do occur, are a single ad- application agenda.
Really? Yeah, this is what we're ready for.
Hmm.
The meetings, we we have actually made it, none earlier. Um, some have been repeat meetings because we didn't get the third, two of them have been repeat meetings because we didn't carry the process out correctly in the brief. On both occasions, we met twice because we didn't carry the process out properly, allegedly. I don't think they both were wrong, but that's how it went. What I am doing now is I'm I'm immediately, because I'm concerned about people being able to speak about this stuff, I'm immediately saying that I'm keen that this should go to committee and um maybe the poor officers get to meet me, or or things, and they get to meet me and I'm due to meet them on several developments which have come here, but I don't get involved in or do not waste officers' time on single developments about a house or something like that. I only say and talk to them about the larger ones and like you you've discussed things like Dutchland Estate, Tewksbury, things like that, the things which are away to, I I I I do talk to them about those because they're in my area, if I didn't, then anyone would. And and that's one of our members in the back end of the ward, he's the chair of the planning committee, he had a doctor strategic development. Um, I'm presuming he's talking. Um I'm presuming he's talking as well to them. But um my view is that if I can find ways for it to be discussed in the public, I will do. Um and have done. And as for the recent May Morton, when I was in Denmark, um which was one holiday I've had in Zavali, is um like that. And I took my laptop with me luckily. And I was emailed um to ask whether I still wanted to call the application in. So as it wasn't going to go to committee, fortunately, I wrote back to them and sent them the correspondence where I had to call it in twenty twenty. I hadn't changed my one job, but I had to come up with some other reasons, which I did. And then two days later, they found out I was outside the country, the computer locked down, but.
Yeah, thank you for that, Robin. That comfortable plan.
So mention names more, is that, this actually comes into this really big, nine in Paris?
Yes, it's set down for December two, a day and a half in December, up in the seventh, in the Federal Courts of Justice.
Not that one, this was May Morton Road three.
This is.
I haven't got involved in that.
No. And that is just that. Yeah, Pat Hardcastle has raised his forty thousand pounds, bringing, she needs to bring it as an individual. If it makes more than have done it as a council, it would cost a lot more, um they could be allowed a lot more against them. Good, thank you. If we can move on then to item eleven consultations, there's two that have been packed and it's finally put together for us. Thank you very much, Catherine. The affordable housing one is very, very encouraging for us. Because it included everything we've been banging on about, thirty five percent labour with the plan policies and they, this document does acknowledge that Val does not explicitly state in syntheses any labour of plan policy, so there is a side by side. So there we finally got it in black and white from from the L P A. Um um which which is very, very good news indeed. What's not such good news is that the same day that I saw this, um the papers reported that the new sector state for dumbing down. Simon Clark is going to put in less portion of housing. Instead of um triggered by tenders currently, it would be triggered by developments of forty to fifty houses.
Wow.
Uh to encourage more of them to meet government targets. Um that's the same time that um the Prime Minister said she was going to drop three hundred thousand new homes for your target if she was elected Prime Minister. Um the other thing he also said, he wants to do away with the need for planning permission on any household extensions. That's that's what he's saying.
Yeah.
Catherine, thank you for that, Robin. It's really helpful in organizing. Martin, you first up.
Yeah, even though um the documents stand um side by side, as you know, even standing side by side, uh there are some that look up and some that look down.
We haven't lost the thirty five percent thousand, the affordable housing. We we want every round of that, Robin.
I'm always pleased to have been right, even though I knew I was right in the first place. Um because when they took the Val Plan through the district council, the only person who put any amendments to it was myself. One of them, and and one was, one of them was to leave board, it would be thirty five percent. They struggled hard and pennaed with many um um discussed what, but then voted against the thirty five percent. But that's a public record, so you can go back and see who voted for what.
Yeah.
Um and um and then we've discussed it endlessly since then. And now with paperwork, um I take it as a personal compliment that they think that, because I was backing the town council's view in that meeting, not my own. But we all wanted thirty five percent. So I take it as a personal compliment, a compliment to the town council that that these people are now in agreement with us. It would have just seemed to be a long, hard road to get them to agree with what we said, which was correct in the first place, that we needed affordable housing. As for what the government says they're going to do, I think that's, that verdict's still out there, isn't it? Um 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 and may change, which may change by the hour. Um but but I do think, to be fair to the many of the officers down there, they'd just like to stay to know where they've got to go. Because quite frankly, and Roger probably knows it more than any of us, not knowing what the government is going to do, how do you move forward if they can change their mind every five minutes? And and each person announces their own personal wish list, um as we've seen how that affects the economy. But um but no, I I I think we should have a press release on that. I think, through you, chairman, I think we should, it's encouraging that that the 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 thirty five percent is.
Well, we know it's, nothing's changed, they're just acknowledging what.
Well, I think it's, I think it's worth acknowledging the press release around it. I think it is a big win for us. Um.
Well, not just us, of course, it's wins though as well.
I know, but we don't do any Winslow, chairman. Um I don't live in Winslow, I don't represent Winslow. I I I think our neighbourhood plan, what we wanted and what African society in us wanted when we drafted that and what we said all along about affordable housing and thirty five percent affordable is come around, that they are in agreement with us and we should thank them for being in agreement with us. And we should do a press release on our post that we do do that. And I think the public will know without no doubt who were the individuals and persons struggled against this, and that was Buckingham Town Council. So I propose we do a press release.
We make our proposal.
Yeah.
Thank you. Second up, for press release on this. We said.
Yeah.
Second again. Anyone else stick any comments? Right, could you say that then, that we do a press release on Buckingham Town Council meeting away with thirty five percent of affordable housing? Rob, Robin said, we told you so. Um anyone against? One against? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you very much, Robin. Um right, the other one, supplementary planning document, again, this is a very important document. Um we are hugely indebted to the Buckingham Society.
Thank you, Roger.
Roger, do you like? Comment on this, um design, that's the deal?
Yes, um for those of you, not as bad as everybody in this room, is familiar with this single, or individual design guides that Ian Dumper's produced about five years ago. They've all been amounted into this document. So in that respect, the principles of the design advice haven't changed. There is, um what they have included in this new is that they've included a considerable amount of environmental issues, water, landscape, planting. So as a, as a guide, it's, it's, it covers everything from say you start off with a field and how you then design up what you're going to put in the field. So I think it's really good, honestly. And I'm pleased that they used all the old stuff as well, but which I thought has always been really helpful to officers. Um but they brought it up into the twenty twenties as far as environmental issues goes on. I would say have a really bit, but it's quite a lot. But i- it's probably worth reading the landscape and environmental issues bits because they are new. But um the design stuff about extension of new houses, materials is is rolled over. Um but the new stuff, I think, is certainly worth reading because it, I think it's pretty comprehensive. Very helpful to us as a town in going into our, we've always known that plan. So the stuff that we've been talking about, you know, working parts, is I think is this makes a lot of what we've been doing, I think.
Thank you, Robin. I had a read through it over the weekend, things that really jump out. The chat, the the stuff on character, the elements maybe drawn from the immediate surroundings that did help develop. Try to focus on traditional elements rather than inappropriate modern development, that's something they've come on roads, they've said applicants should avoid promoting developments accessed only by a single, from a single location. Again, you know, and the so disclosed way faced one, there's only one entrance in and out. Larger developments for over three hundred houses should consider routing buses through their sites. That was a good one.
Yeah.
Um and larger values should also incorporate a range of local services and facilities.
Yeah.
And finally, down on Port Live because we had an application tonight, single story extensions should not finish roofs. Catherine, thank you very much. Do you like, I don't know if that's, see this made as a proper document that everyone has access to.
Yes, a proper document with an index that goes on YouTube. I mean, there's lots of it to wave. It really is. Um I mean, because it's a continuous document. You can't actually tell how many pages it is because there's no little green corner. I bought it down, didn't I? But it's the sort of thing that developers and, you know, their design people, they need to have just something they can click through and say, oh, that's what they say about that. Then, because there are tip box pages, if you like, for developers to actually sort of, yes, we've done that, we've done that, we've done goals. Um which is fine for a developer, but for an original designer, you know, they're just sort of wanting to sketch things out and just get an idea of what they want to do with this state. They could do with a book, they can open up, you know, look at. Yeah. Uh I know it takes paper and I know that's about the environment, but sometimes it's just not easy to click through a lot of pages that you can't, you haven't got an index or or indeed a nursery. Yeah.
Thank, thank you for the praise here, that. I propose a word of thanks to Robin, other Buckingham society, who worked on this. Thank you very much, Roger. Robin.
Yeah, thank you. Premise in mind, premise might prove that, thanks, my previous Thomas, this actually came up at the growth and infrastructure select committee the other day. Uh I mean, so I talked to, discussed with the officer, and she was really very good. And she um um she came back to meet me and came back down after she had had her discussions in the committee and met me and went through it, and very much what Roger said about the way it's going to pick up the advents of the local things that we've done. The charge all meant that into it, you know, the 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 fact that this work you've done is still hit up, they they they've used it. Although in the report wasn't clear enough, so I I emailed her during the meeting while she was talking. And um and then she came back to see me. I think it is something that we had a little win over. And but I do think that this is why I say again, we need to start monitoring this select. If this is going to be our development, that it's our chance to speak. And the Buckingham Society might want to do it as well, because they might have something they want to speak about.
Yeah, thank you, Robin. Right, anyone else on that? More noted, thank you very much. Uh the quarterly meeting for town and county councils, having environment service, we've come Catherine, pardon, it's a little over half. I believe you're still waiting for five slides.
Again.
When you get those, they will be circulated. Robert, thanks. Thank you very much. Anyone got any comments on that? We we note it.
And we look forward to getting to it.
Thank you very much. Um item thirteen, enforcement, report any breaches, anybody?
Um is that issue that I mentioned to you, Catherine, relevant under this heading?
Um well, it's already, it's already.
It's already.
You've sent me a picture and I can pass the report on. Um also councillor Harvey has noted that the Turkish barbers in Bridge Street has got a, a sort of perlite illumination barber barber pole thing. Um it it's, it's, it's a cylindrical thing with lots of light bulbs, but the the charge goes round, so that it looks as though it's rotating. It's in the conservation area on us.
That's entirely related.
And we discussed that.
That's the previous.
This is the Turkish bar.
Was it?
Almost the end where they might have to.
Yeah, we have two or three bottles.
The one in the central town.
No, and that is actually a rotating cylinder in the old fashioned style, with a set of light bulbs, a bit like a bedrock.
Okay, yes, yes. That's what caught my eye today.
Anything, what else? Anything there?
No, thank you. Just hang there if you have any questions on enforcement, on going to meet another night, so.
I have to say that it's all, all the departments at Ellsbury Enforcement is one of the best.
Which is working the best.
It is really working well, and that is because think of all set of people, according to the quarterly meeting.
You're not going to pass on your thanks about it working.
Yeah, they have been works well, um.
Everything's set for those.
Yeah.
I'm going to stretch the point of item thirteen of enforcement. Um enforcement of fibre delivery. Seems to be on the up again. Um we'll bring it under point thirteen in future meetings if there's anything untoward happening. But um.
It's not an enforcement dossier, of course.
Wow.
It does come under that as a report, yeah.
Yeah.
Can we move on to applications for trees then? The list is.
We get sixteen.
Attached, make your difference.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um the quarterly update in section one oh six, agreements, spreadsheets attached. Any comments on this? Thank you very much for the work on that. Item sixteen, that is the report, Martin.
Yeah.
Um I'm going to stretch the point, if I may, under point sixteen.
Nicely done.
Yes, uh fibre delivery. I mean, again, it is ripping up the town. Um and um, well, just, just today, I noticed they'd started again on Pageill.
Because another two months have been on Pageill, on quarterly update charts.
I thought that company had already with the purple moe, whatever, Swish. I thought they'd already been through that section of Pageill and now they seem to be going from the roundabout up again.
They didn't walk Pageill, they'd have come back to finish what they didn't do, honestly. Except I, I don't, I had a letter this morning from saying, we'll be doing your street in the next fourteen days.
I got one last week from Swish.
They did, they did that in July.
Yeah, I had one about two weeks ago, and they've done mine.
Was that the second person actually coming to the meeting opportunity?
Yeah.
I thought my letter was Swish, that he had been quite rude about, I mean, that's everywhere with.
Yeah.
Um he, that meeting was Friday night, I got it on Monday morning, which I think is probably the first person to deliver it, that we've done it on.
And you are, but I saw, you're very blamey, um postal office, the lot delivery room, hundreds of thousands of letters.
I got mine, I just checked, I got mine on Tuesday. So the Tuesday afternoon post is when I got my Swish letter.
I saw the office um sending out various emails of road closures because they're digging up and putting in whatever they call those boxes.
Yeah.
Um but.
Well, of course, it's talking, which I've written over about the market pill closure, which is coming up.
Exactly, yeah, that was the one I was thinking of.
Yeah. Is that going to cause huge problems at the market and?
No, we've, we've checked exactly where it's going to be, the structure of the market, we've gone back to T G R office and. Contact a given, yeah.
Right.
Relationship there. So as far as I'm aware, it tends to be, we are sure it's a problem.
Good.
I would say that parking was the other, the other concern.
Only the big problem, hair, the hairdresser, down to pretty much citizens' advice, it's up sixteen, it's up eighteen. Probably, probably goes off to West Street.
Okay.
Where it all ages that.
Oh, right, so it's not, it's not right the way down. You can shift that little car, little Tesco.
Sixty minutes.
Okay, stop for a while, I I misread the map.
That's all uh tarmac, is it not?
No.
It's what?
It'll all go back, it's, it's.
Of course it will.
That's what they do.
No, so we'll be on top of that, will we? Because, you know, once you disturb that sort of.
We've been three years trying to get the entrance to police yard sorted.
I've actually got a photograph of their actual promise to do. Um.
But I'm, I'm not downing them, I, you know, they've got a job to do, but they've also got a job to do to put it back up. The same, if not better, because they have disturbed the uh, the. The same, if not better, because they have disturbed the, uh, the ground.
Thank you. Any other damage to purpose, predominance, I, one thing I will find, still a lot of adverts publicity on Buckingham Facebook about the parking machines out here.
Hmm.
I'm not talking about this weekend when they were closed at the fair, but prior to that, only one was working at one point in the whole car park.
Cars.
Um, it's under the better disabled, because people with blue badges, but it doesn't affect o- older people all, all the way across the car park to find the machines on.
They're working.
It might not, yeah. They're all working.
Could we raise that with Buckinghamshire parking, with, you know, vacation bike machines? Thank you, Robin.
I think the final comment I had on it from one person, it's a shame that one of them was working. Those people were happy to walk all around the car park looking for the one that worked. And thankfully, people in Buckingham are quite sociable, so they shout, don't go that one. That one was the only one that's working. But, um, people who come to the town, I mean, it's not good for trade and it, and it would deter you coming back.
Most people would surrender to the town.
And, and, um, I was, you know, one of many things you report, and I am, I was going to report it when I ended up doing something else. Um, but people should report this stuff on, everything should be reported. Maybe, I think you can do it on Fix My Streets, it's got a, sort of doing it.
Yeah, they got it.
I, I, I think it's got it on there, I think we should report it because it, I'm not sure quite what it is, but it appears that the blue light's on, but the thing doesn't work. So, and if you remember, the old ones used to never, um, used to go wrong when you put the money in periodically. So whatever, wherever they got these parking ticket machines from, they must have been a bad lot.
So the lights are on, but no one's home.
Yes, the.
Can we propose that they bring the old machines back because they worked?
No, because you can't, people swap tickets. That's why. It's to stop you swapping cheap.
Put the fifty pence, then take the ticket and boot it back to the machine.
Thank you, everyone. Anyway, um, chairman has no announcements tonight. The date of the next meeting is Monday, it's November, or November. All right, everyone, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine, thanks, perfect.